Nation, under God, in the visible, with the thirteen and the last of all.
I like the vote made right here for our municipal tiebreaker to what they count 38th Senate District seat. I'm from Marshall, which is in Dane County. I'm running against the incumbent Joel Playfish. And what I wanted to address tonight is the hurry industries dumping here in Concord. You know...
We're not going to get into it until you want to leave an immediate talking room.
Okay.
Because...
He just wants to...
Yeah. But you can make your opinion as quick, but yeah, we're not gonna...
How much time do we have?
Two minutes.
Two minutes. Very good. I believe this is an outrage, plain and simple. I don't know most of you folks. I know that this group tonight is probably pretty divided. I know that there's a recall going on and tensions are high. But I just feel as a citizen that the hurry industries dumping at three times the normal rate, somebody ought to be held accountable. I think this should have been taken directly to the Department of Justice. I believe that those wells need to be tested. I believe that the wells, right now, a lot of the homeowners don't even know if these wells are contaminated. I'm here tonight to work with this board to resolve any conditions that may apply, anything that we can do to help those people, those homeowners. Somewhere tonight in Concord Town, there may be a pregnant woman who didn't read the paper last Sunday, who might be having her child contract this blue babysitter that I've been reading about. There might be homeowners trying to sell their homes, who now because of the press having this story out, their homes are worthless. Now, I don't care if you're Republican or you're Democrat. I really don't care. I think this is a common sense issue. This is a Wisconsin issue. I think their homes, their environment, needs to be cleaned, be cleaned up. I think everybody would agree that we need to have clean drinking water. This is serious stuff, folks. Drinking dirty water like this, it can be contaminated with human waste. It can cause a lot of medical conditions. I know my stepfather, when he was in Canada one time, got sick. He had giardia for almost four weeks. And when 9/11 came around, he went to go give blood, and they said his liver chromosomes were too high to give blood. I think that we need answers on these 40 wells. And I'm not playing partisan politics when I say that. Deciding, to see if these people are safe or not, I think is priority number one, and that's why I'm here tonight.
Yes. (applause)
The open meeting law now is going to let people talk about Richard Hare situation. And let me just give a brief synopsis of what I found out when I did my study of this situation. Ron, over in the community, made me aware when I came back on vacation that this issue was on the floor. And so I went to work and I tried to find out, first of all, does Richard Hare have a conditional use permit? And we talked about that. He does not have a conditional use permit over the county zoning, and therefore there's no conditional use to redid from him. And the zoning department says we have no control over what Richard Hare is doing out there. So the zoning department is kind of like, they don't have any power on it. They said that it is A1 agricultural land, and what he does with the DNR is within the parameters of A1 agricultural zoning. So they have no problem with it. So then I moved the next person, and I talked to the district attorney of our county. And they said, yeah, he was given three citations back in 2009. And he pleaded no contest, and paid the fines, and life went on. The DNR then accepted the fines, and they monitored him for a while, and he renewed forward with the DNR his ability to go back in the business of putting knifeing in the sludge into his land there. And I said, well, what about this three times limit? Well, then she didn't know anything about that, and I said, well, who do I contact? She had no contact. So I started Googling and finding out DNR telephone numbers, and I called somebody that feed me another number of somebody. And finally, I got the person that was involved in watching over the sludge application, sewage application, over at Richard Hare's facility. And he said, the application where the violation took place was in 2009, three years ago. And again, he reiterated the fact that he was stopped at that point in time, books were checked, and records were checked, and he paid the fines. And he wanted to give me a lesson on what the problems were, and his problems, or his philosophy, or whatever. There is so much, in sewage, the main ingredient or the main concern for people is the nitrate level, because it's basically nitrogen. And if you put on three times the amount, it would be about 100 units of nitrogen. If you're a farmer, you know 100 units of nitrogen. Most farmers, to get 150 bushels of corn, you're putting on 170 units of nitrogen. So at the level that he was caught at three times level is less than what if a farmer was farming his field corn right next to your property and putting on nitrogen. So he felt in his mind, there is not immediate danger as far as the DNR was concerned. He paid the fines, and now they're monitoring him very close. And I said, well, when you say monitoring, is there a guy out there standing and counting how many truckloads of sludge is going out there, and how many are being knifed into the ground? The only way that they can monitor is every time that you have your septic tank pumped, now, it has to be signed off by Richard Hare, or our guy Dave Leverance, because I get mine pumped by him, and he has to sign up this paper and send it into the county. The county has to have that documentation, otherwise they're on my case and I get a fine. So the documentation that says that he pumped out 500 gallons or 1,000 gallons out of my property now goes onto a computer that goes to the DNR that Dave Leverance now had $1,000, 1,000 gallons, or whatever, to dispose of out of my property. So this is how the checking balance comes into play. I said, yeah, because in my mind, how do you know if he's not doing 10 times the amount instead of three times the amount? And they said, well, now we have a way of doing it, and this is how we do it, is by every time that he is okaying that he's pumped out a septic tank or whatever, it goes on addition of how much he can put on his property. I said, okay, fine. So the next thing that we have to discuss, I mean, most people here, not most people, there's some people here that don't care for Richard Hare and his operation possibly. Well, we have to decide, is there immediate danger to your drinking water? And so I contacted, there was a place in Watertown that did water samples, and I asked them, and they said they were no longer doing water samples, but they suggested a place in New Berlin. And I called this place in New Berlin, you want to put it up on the... And they would work with the town contractor and give us a little discount. And it's called, yes, what's that?
Summer Fry.
Summer Fry, you know?
I've used them for years.
Mr. Ryder said that he uses them, and apparently they're a good lab company then.
Yeah, but they can test for more than just, they can test for other kinds of contaminants.
Well, for $28, you get a safe well test, and I think it's $20 more to get the nitrate test. The one that you should do is the nitrate test plus the safe water. So it's going to cost you about $50. And what they said, they told me, all you have to do is call them, they send you a sample kit out to your house, you do it, you do it according to instructions, send it back to them, and in a matter of a couple of days, you'll have your safe water, whether or not you have to worry about. So what I suggest, or you, because my main concern, and before I get nuts and stuff, I want to hit somebody or whatever, is to test your water to find out if you have a problem. And if you can't afford it, you know, I'm suggesting that the county can say, you know, we'll help you out. And I don't know.
Is there county money, or is there state money?
There's no county money, unless you have, if you're pregnant, if you can prove that you're pregnant, then the county people said that they would pay for it. So I mean, we're talking about...
Why is Richard Hare paying?
Because we don't know, because we don't know if Richard Hare has caused any damage to your wells. You have to prove to me, first of all, that you have a bad well. And if you can prove to me that you have a bad well, then we have to work together, and we have to find out why you have a bad well. And that's, the DNR will work with us on that. Now, is it because of Richard Hare, or is there some kind of reason in your yard? You know, we don't know. So the first thing, before we can get excited, is to find a well that's contaminated with too much nitrate.
Does the DNR, if you should have been...
The one thing, no, they haven't initiated nothing, and I asked them if they would pay for it, they would pay for it. All I'm concerned about is for my people in the town...
And then we can go from there.
Yes.
Look at it.
I'm Brad, the president of Brad Holsey. I'm on the Natural Resources Committee in the Assembly, and been trying to explore this matter a little more deeply. I also authored Danger on Tap, which is a report about the crypto-outbreak in Milwaukee that killed over 50 people, say over 400,000. And the well that test that you are recommending does not test for many of the sewage-based pathogens that can hurt and kill people. That is why you can't just go for the basic test. You have to test for viruses, you have to test for percutaneous... Nitrites are a problem in about half of the wells in Southern Wisconsin.
Okay, but let me finish... Well, if you're with the DNR, wait a second. If you're with the DNR, the sludge at this point in time is mostly going to be a combination of nitrate. Is that correct or not?
No, it is sewage-based material, dumped, you know, pumped out of your septic tank or somebody else's. And again, nitrates bad. It causes blue baby syndrome, and causes uterine cancer, which is bad. But because they spread it at three times the limit, that's why you'd have to test for these viruses, which you have your studies show are a much bigger problem, that make a lot more people sick. The other reason, the whole problem here came up, because if DNR had referred this matter to the Department of Justice, then they would have forced Mr. Hare both to do the testing and the cleanup. None of you should have died to this. Mr. Hare should have been forced to pay this. The three violations you mentioned, he was fined for $240,000. This is like letting a five-time drunk driver off with a slap on the wrist, and then say, oh, by the way, you have to pay for your... So the whole issue here is, and you know, it's fine to tell people to test the well, Mr. Hare, under our law, should have been paying for that, had this matter been referred to the Department of Justice. Because again, he's a proven bad actor. The other thing is just from a liability point of view, for your concern, you saw your $42,000 budget. I was a county board for 14 years. You were very exposed from a legal point of view. Because if one person gets sick, or under the worst-case scenario dies from this, knowing what you know right now, you are at a very, you know, bad position from a lawsuit point. So I would encourage you to tell the Department of Natural Resources Secretary Stephanie and draft you a letter that says, they should pay for the testing, they do have money for this. They should also get Mr. Hare's records. Mr. Hare has horrible records on this. He actually fudged the books, changed them. You mentioned the whole bookkeeping thing. After the investigator went in, Mr. Hare changed his books, tried to cook his books so he wasn't causing, which is why the investigator said he should be sent to the Department of Justice, not let off the slack.
Okay, so basically, I'm telling you your question again?
My name is Representative Brad Holsey. I'm on the Assembly Natural Resources Committee, and the legislature's office.
My key issue then is, or two concerns here. One is for Richard Hare and his, well, his mail, he broke the law.
He broke the law.
And the DNR should have more or less took more action than what they did. And somehow, it was kind of, all right. So we have to work on that. But my main concern, right here, right now, is with our health of our people. And if you can't afford to get a bacteria or E. coli or virus...
Virus testing.
Testing, if you say that that's what we should get, then we should get that done. And yeah, maybe what I should do is pursue the DNR to get reimbursed for it. You keep your bill, turn them in to me, I'll turn them into a DNR, and let's see if we can get reimbursed for it. You know, I don't know if we can or not, but why not get really quick to find out if you're drinking...
I would send a letter to them right now, requesting that they pay.
If you want to help draft up a letter, that'd be terrific. But that isn't, I don't want to wait until we get an okay from the DNR, which might be six months from now or whatever. If you're, if there's any concern right now, test your water, find out if there is a concern, and then we'll pursue it and get reimbursed for what Hare may have caused damage in our community over there.
One more point, one more point.
The other...
For you. Because he's spreading on many, you know, he's, you need to find all of the records from his spread, not just the one violated in 2009. Because again, he appears to have cooked those books. You need to get all of his records, so that you know exactly what's going on. This is human...
What we...
And you can request that from the DNR, they have them.
Okay, okay. We know that the field that we're concerned about is by Golden Lake Park Circle, and the people on the...
Inland Drive.
Right. So we got Inland Drive and Golden Lake Park Circle that we're immediately concerned, and those individuals...
You're a real change.
You can also, yeah, okay, very good.
No one has notified anyone. No one has yet officially noticed. How come, how are those people to know that they're supposed to get their wells checked? No one has sent out any kind of notice. If they don't get the newspaper...
Yeah, we should...
No one has notified people.
We'll go around and put a flyer in there. Most people are here right now, like, see...
My name is Kim Wright, and I work for a nonprofit environmental loss center. I did all of the open records requests for the article that was in the paper, and worked with a retired DNR enforcement person. So I just, I guess it's really important to know what happened here, that the field staff of the DNR, who are trained professionals, they know what they're doing, they're the ones that created the record for enforcement, and they, there's a big three-ring binder, it's a law enforcement investigation, just like any other, you know, investigation. And they wanted this to go to the Department of Justice, particularly to have the wells tested. As Representative Holsey said, the records were changed many, many times, and there were 60 violations. He got very minimal treatment at the circuit court level for five citations. So there were 60 violations. There is a real concern about what was in that sludge, but I would say that, and what happened then, the field staff in DNR, who were the professional science-based decision-makers, were overruled by the political appointees in the secretary's office of the DNR. And at one enforcement conference, the representative Joel Playfish from this, came to the enforcement conference on behalf of Mr. Hare, the Hare Environmental, and, you know, they were, and the top three people in the DNR, the secretary, the deputy secretary, and the executive assistant, all worked on Hare Environmental's behalf because they knew him and knew people in the company. So it's pretty, it is the DNR's job, and there are people in the DNR who want to do their jobs. They were not allowed to do their jobs because of political influence and money peddling and all of that. So I do think, no, let's not hear, see, I have the records. The only reason it was, I've seen the records myself, it's not hearsay.
We can talk how huge a violation, and how Richard Hare should get more than a slap on the hand because there's some kind of politics going on underneath the table, whatever. My main concern is the health of these people.
Absolutely.
So we have to get the word out, we'll put a flyer out.
The reason I'm saying all that is there's a record that has, the people who did the investigation know what wells are affected, they know the fields, so all that information exists. You shouldn't have to work harder, you should have those records from the DNR.
And we would like them too.
Yeah.
And wouldn't it be wise to have the DNR get involved with the testing, so they know what the tests were? You talked about nitrates, and he's talking about infectious diseases or whatever. Hey, what are these people now, have, send a sample, what are they saying? What are you going to test it for?
Well, everything. What are you worried about? It's just hearsay.
Oh, yeah.
It's just hearsay. Trust me. You know, I don't know, again, I don't know... It's just hearsay. Well, we can make it, we can make it emotional to you, or we can talk circles, and how we should, you know, get a policy, and find the nearest tree, and blah, blah, blah. You know, the thing is, the thing is, I want you to test your water in your area, and you have to, maybe make the phone call, and tell them what's the kind of situation. I told her what had happened out here, and she suggested that the safe water one would be the E. coli, and then the nitrate one would be the ones that you need to have. Now, if the representative in the back said that we should go beyond that, talk to them, they're the ones that have the knowledge, you know, and what you, the lab. And if I can get the money reimbursed by the DNR, I'm going to try to do so. If you can't afford it, or whatever, like I said, you know, see me, I'll...
Could it be more aggressive for that guy? He put something together to help us with a fire, to let them know what to test it for, it was like that one gentleman said.
Yeah.
Yeah, gentlemen. Maybe we can put your comments together with your comments. Does the DNR records reflect the pathogens that he suggested would not be shown by a $50 test? Yes?
We, I don't know that, I think there's a lot more information to look at for a trained person to make that decision. If it's my well, I would want to know more than just the $50 test. I want to know if I needed more than that. I want to talk to people with a lot of good information to make that decision.
The place to start, Bill, is the DNR, to get their records, and have somebody review their records, to see if it's consonant with what you're suggesting, represent. Seems to me, well, otherwise you're going around in circles perhaps.
Well, apparently, and listening to your comments, is that you don't know if the $50 would be sufficient or not.
Yeah, I don't know, and I'm not an expert.
Okay, so I don't, I'm not an expert. That's why when we make the phone call, ask them to be on the safe side, tell them what you're concerned about, and go through the process of getting your wealth out there. From there, we go on. And if you have any questions, and it's money-wise, see me. And if we didn't help you financially, you know, it's hard to down, or do I have to take it out of my salary, whatever. Laura?
You have to... Read you. I'm Laura Ralphson, Golden Lake Park Circle. So when you said they do not have a conditional use permit, he does not have one? Because I thought I asked you at one point, how long is that conditional use permit good? Because when I would take my dog for walks in the morning, it would be so putrid, and he couldn't hang clothes out, because they would smell putrid when you brought him in. And you, I could have sworn you said, well, when there's compelling evidence to suggest that the conditional permit would be full, that the conditional...
See, I thought there was too, and I talked to the zoning, and they said there's no conditional use permit. I did talk to the DNR guy, and if there's any kind of smell, and this is what they need to monitor with me.
Brad said she, you were aware of the smell, she called you out like three years ago.
Three years ago.
Well, it's continuing for the last three years. It's been...
When you have the smell, when you have the smell, call me, because I'll have to go out there. The DNR guy told me to call him, and he would come out, and because if he's not putting it in the ground correctly, then that means it's in violation, and we'll stop him right there. Because there should not be a smell, so...
See, how many violations are we asking for?
You know, the thing is, now we should go up to the DNR office, because I can't help you, the DNR is the one that says that, they now say that he can go back out in the field and spread the sludge. What I'm concerned about, Laura, is whether or not your health is at risk. And the smell, I'll help you out on that too. When you have a smell, let me know, because then I'm just going to call this guy, and I'll pay back on twice a day, three times a day. I'll call him and tell him down there and says, all right, you have to either update your equipment, or you have to stop spreading because there's a smell. He said there shouldn't be a smell.
Right, now we're going to petition the county to pull, so that he is no longer, he's proven that he's not...
The county doesn't have anything to do with it, Laura.
It's totally the DNR.
Totally the DNR, totally the DNR.
And here, it's...
Question in the back.
Should the gentleman grow crops or raise animals on these fields? No, no.
Not like, or does he rotate field corn?
No. Okay. Is it a farm, and he doesn't grow, plant, grow corn, or raise livestock?
No, I don't think so. Answer your question.
I can shed a light, it's right next to our farm, and I know Dan Robinson, who runs our farm also, and I know they're going to be putting corn, and because he complained to me just the other day with that heavy equipment that packs the soil out, which proves that they're going to be putting corn.
So they're going to be putting corn on, what I was, I'm impressed when I went out and investigated on your call, is that they do one field, and they plant corn on that field, and then they do this field. But do you know the...
He presently, from, again, with Dan Robinson, I'm new to this, but Dan said they are now spreading on the south side of the road. They aren't even on the north side. Again, this is what the guy that's running the farm...
Okay. We'll take one person at a time, you have a comment to say?
I'm standing up here so that you guys have a better aim, okay? I work for Hare Environmental, and the fields are rotated, and they are planted with crops.
Guys, people, I look at that field. I live on Inland Drive, I look at the 40 that's open, and the next 40, he's been spreading for seven years continuously. There's no rotation. That tractor sits up on that hill there, the trucks come up, they unload, and he spreads it. Tell me I'm wrong.
You're wrong, you're wrong. We actually have a third-party farmer, not us, plant, and he was supposed to plant on April 12. He thought it was going to be drying up for April 12. And our April 12th was the day we were supposed to stop. He wanted five days of drying before he planted.
Plant where?
On the field in question, and the field to the west of it. Because we are not doing any spreading on the north side of Highway 18, because we rotate, we're on the south side of Highway 18. Our injector, our injector is parked on the north side, because that's where our transfer tanks are. To fill our injector, we have to go over there and come over to the other side, because we do inject below the surface.
So that tractor going back and forth isn't doing anything?
The tractor that's going back and forth is going to the south side of the road.
No, it's going in the field.
As of April 12th, it isn't, no, because of the rotation of the crops.
So you just started that rotation?
The rotation...
The last seven years, it's been going continuously, all the time. No April, no nothing.
No, it has not.
I'm watching.
That's, that's fine, because it has not, the other, the farmer has records at Jefferson County of what he planted, and, and we were on the south side, came back to the north side. We have to do a proper rotation of them, so we are moving before the crops and after the crops. So you will see on years where we're on the field twice, because we can get in there early, before the crops and after the crops. But I want to talk about a couple other things that are sorely mistaken, and that's one of them. The representative in the back mentioned a $240,000 fine. That wasn't for the three tickets, for the over-application. But I want to stress one thing. Over-application did not occur. Bad record-keeping did occur. You're looking at the guy who made the mistake. The DNR mails us every January a report we have to fill out. January of 2010 for application year 2009, they never mailed it. As a matter of fact, they did mail it, I got it in August of that year, and I still have the envelope with the postmark on it. It's due on January... It's due on January 31st. I run a state conference for three days that I had to be in Stevens Point form. So I pulled off old forms off of the internet, filled them out using a new program, and I made a mistake. I made a mistake. I sent it in because it had to be in by the 31st. And several months later, here comes the DNR and a warden with a gun into our office saying, look at this paper. I looked at it. I could see the error. It was that obvious. It was such a major error. It was ridiculous. If you don't hear me say anything, because I know you don't, but if you don't hear me say anything, this isn't an over-application problem. It was a paperwork mistake on my end. And to answer another thing that keeps getting brought up, 60 bad records. 60 bad records. The DNR, when they came to us, because we have transfer tanks, because we empty into a tank and put into an injector that will inject underground so we don't have to field-spread land apply at the surface like our competitors do. What we do is we inject. What the DNR did was made up, okay, we want you to do a thing that says, what tank goes in what number tank? And when you take it out of there, we want another record. This is something nobody else has to do because they don't have transfer tanks. So when they say there's 60 forms with the problem, 60 forms because they made up something for us to do that's not in any code. We do it and we brought that up to compliance. And I will say this, I will say this. If this isn't politically motivated, why did they wait three years? This is a 2009 supposed issue. 2009 supposed issue. Over-application in 2009. If you, if it was an environmental issue, why didn't they bring it up in 2009 or 2010 or 2011? Why didn't they wait up to 2009?
There was an active investigation. Again, I've seen most of the records. There was an active investigation. And where things got stopped was in Madison. The people in the field were really concerned. And one thing I really think we have to say here is that the people, the people who continue to work at the DNR, who stepped up, you know something was really wrong and they were really concerned for public health. It's a line, the DNR is a line authority agency. I used to work at the DNR. It needs to be a line authority agency to work for... That these people stepped out, they tried to get this to move forward. They couldn't get it to move forward. And an investigation takes a while. They were really concerned and they, so I've talked to those guys and they're good people that are science-based. They were afraid for public health. That's why they put their necks on the line.
I want to know this then. I'll only say one more thing. But if they were so concerned environmentally, why, after they reviewed our records and a third-party test of the soil to show that there wasn't additional nutrients on there, did they give us back at the time a very rare high-use application for that field? There's only probably a handful of them in the entire state. And we have that approval on that field. We did. They took it away during the investigation. And during the investigation, after third-party state testing lab tested the soil, reviewed our records, yes, there were some errors, no question. They gave us back, and the field guys gave us back, not their upper guys at the state that everybody thinks were, you know, that Rich is, you know, giving money to. The field guys that took away the thing, came into our office, said, okay, everything is up and up, and gave us the high-use approval back. The high-use is something that there's maybe five of them in the state. Maybe there's 10 now. But at the time we had it, there was two or three of them. And they gave us that high-use back. If they were that concerned environmentally, why did we get that back? And it didn't have anything to do with people above their heads.
Would you get those records to our town chairman so they could look at it?
Sure. Now, I'm going to say one thing about records. And when the DNR came in, I'm going to say one thing about records. The records that they keep mentioning are, we keep a record for every tank we pump. Every tank. So a record for a year is stacks of paper above this high, of four or five stacks of paper this high. That's what our records are. And that's what we gave to the DNR. And that's what we set on the table for them. They moved into our office for a long time. I mean, he went through that. Excuse me?
It does sound like a lot of dumping.
I'd be happy to digitize it for you.
Excellent. Okay. Great. But it's a lot of dumping, but it's a lot less dumping than we used to have. A lot less dumping. I mean, there's a lot less people pumping their subjects than used to. People are waiting until you have a problem right now because of the economy.
What is your title for parents?
Vice President.
Vice President, I see.
And what is your name, Chris?
My name is Todd Stair. Like the kind you walk up.
And there were three different, you know, variations of your report. Captain, you might be getting closer to the regulations. You mentioned one, one was the other. One was the other one, or two were?
The, well, the one, except the tractor. Where we keep track of all, it was supposed to make it better. It was supposed to make it more efficient. And I trusted it and I shouldn't have. And that's my fault. The second one was basically I pulled out a template instead of the field records because they look identical. The template runs down backwards, how much we have left on the field. We keep track of how much is left on the field. And when we get to the end, we move our guys to the other field. So to say there was three times is just, it's virtually impossible. But I did make an error on the second one while we were sitting there with a gun. I was nervous. It was a part in my life that I never want to live through again. And believe me, you have a right to be mad. You have a right to be concerned and angry based on what's written in the paper, but you're digging half the story in the paper for political reasons.
So what's a political issue?
It's worse than what's in the paper.
What's the political issue?
And as you answered that question, what is Clayfish's responsibility in this process? Because he was accused of intervening on behalf of your employer to go ahead and lighten the fines that he was going to accept. Is that also inaccurate?
I will answer that question. It's not illegal to contact your representatives when you're having an issue. The field guy was not returning our phone calls nor our emails. And I can give you that record. He was not, he was not returning my phone calls or my emails repeatedly for us to get some answers. So what do you do then? Do you just sit back and stay out of business for more months? We started calling anybody we could call because that's what you do. I'm sure Mr. Halsey in the back gets calls from his constituents when they have an issue and they can't get it taken care of. That's what you're... That's what you're representing in their report.
Sir, you're describing the ad hoc political process.
Right.
That's understandable that you go to an elected official. And asking you to address...
Traffic indoors? No.
I'm asking you to address, Mr. Clayfish was contacted, understandably so. But then, is it accurate or inaccurate that he intervened on your employer's behalf to reduce the fines and whatever other legal issues he may incur?
I can't answer what Joe Clayfish had on.
Well, then how is this a political issue?
It's a political issue because what I'm saying is, why did they wait until a month before the recall?
Who's "they"?
Whoever wrote the article.
Well, who's "they"? Who's, I mean, Mr. Sealy wrote the article.
Okay.
All right?
A month before the recall? Three years after the alleged occurrence?
There are a lot of things that happen after the facts. I'm your vice president. I just fell off the cabbage truck. I don't know enough.
Here is perhaps, the first story Ron Sealy did about the Walker DNR was that they have reduced their enforcement action referral to the Department of Justice 50 to 80 percent. That was the first goal. And what he was doing was looking for examples. He has a bunch more examples of this exact same thing happening that are going to be coming out probably in the next few weeks. Because what we have been saying is the DNR is not doing its job to refer these actions to the Department of Justice. Because if they refer the Department of Justice, as I understand it, then you and Hare would have to pay for the water testing for all these people. And frankly, if I were you, I would pay for all that right now because soil testing doesn't matter.
Make a test.
People just drink soil, they drink water from their tank. And, but, Mr. Chair, and this is a little above your pay grade with all due respect, all this fact. One of the reasons I have called for is an independent hearing of this at the legislature. We're the people who have oversight in Natural Resources Committee over the DNR. Not town boards with all due respect, very hard work. But, so, so that we can get all these facts out in public. I have asked for this by today. We haven't heard back whether the Neil Kenzie or Chairman Mercer are going to hold that hearing. They said they're considering. And if they don't, I will have the hearing myself. Next Tuesday or Wednesday, and ask some of you to come tell your story. You should not have to go outside and not be able to hang your clothes out because the poop smells. You know, that's not...
You obviously live near where your kids come. I mean, the quality of life is awful. That should make you worried.
So will Hare be responding to these allegations?
I'm here...
Listen up, guys. We're going to have to, I'm going to close up this meeting here because in my mind, we can argue all night long about this situation. I appreciate Todd, that you were man enough to come here and face the music here and listen to the questions. My main concern, and you have to talk to me after the meeting, we have to get the word out within the subdivision and on Inland Drive. Anybody that has any possibility on Highway 18 also, sorry. And anyone that has any kind of possibility of concern that their water might be contaminated, get it tested and then we're going to go from there. As far as taking, you know, this up on the upper level, you're right. This is not my level that we can address this. We have to go to the state level where the DNR is going to be forced to be recognized. Right? Am I correct? Okay. So we can talk about this all we want. We're not going to get in, we're here at this meeting. But my main concern is for your safety. Again, take the initiative, call them, find out. They'll know what's going to make it safe for you to drink your water. This laboratory and you have your tested, Richard there, they know what has to be tested. If it costs you $100, if it costs you $200. Don't you want to know if your water's safe? Spend the money and I'll work with the representative in the back and see if there's DNR money that we can possibly get to reimburse you. So, and if you have any problem with financials, see me too.
Commander, and I will be here after the meeting. If anybody wants to give me their contact information, I can give you my card. We're continually working on this and I can, our organization is willing to hire an expert if that's what it needs to look into what you should have tested.
Well, you won't have to hire experts. They, they're experts. They do well testing, water testing every day. They're going to know what needs to be tested. E coli, nitrate, whatever. Find out in your mind, what needs to be in your mind so if you drink that water, do you know that it's safe?
How do you know how big the area is?
Well, if it isn't, if it isn't around the field, I don't know how far. But that's a good question. Yes, ma'am.
How far do we know down that it goes with the consistent overlaying of dumping that he's doing? How far down is this going into the aquifer? I mean, this could be an explosive, huge issue. It's not just talking about little surface wells. What's going on beyond that?
Well, again, that's a good question. But right now, my main...
But that's why I think this isn't just neighborhood. This needs to go to the DOJ and they need to work on this.
All right. Well, good point, good point. But again, it's beyond my, that's pretty easy. Okay.
But I'm not bringing it up for the group.
Well, first of all, let's get our neighborhood wells tested so that there's no immediate concern for my sake of Golden Lake Park Circle, Inland Drive, and Highway 18.
I just heard only speak a minute or so.
That's great.
My name is Senator Bush. I live on Highway 18. We have the deer in Elkhorn on Highway 18. So we want to fund two sides of Mr. Hare's property. We've been there 16 years. We lived in Milwaukee before, 27 years before we raised our children. Till my husband had this cool idea about the deer, which, I'm a very easygoing person. But anyhow, I taught aerobics five days a week for 35 years. I never smoked. I never did drugs. Three years ago, I wasn't feeling good. Went to the doctor. Four-stage ovarian cancer. I do not have hair on my body. Go to chemo once a week. I don't know if he's at fault. I'm going to say, that's it. My husband's going to go crazy when he hears that. Put it to bed.
I've got a question aside from this with environmental issues. What's happening with the city of Milwaukee dumping all that raw sewage in there? What the...
They, they always, they always, you want to talk for the afternoon meeting, that's fine. That's fine. I'm going to, I'm going to close up the meeting. If there's any other concerns, public concerns about anything else besides the here situation.
Would he remove contamination? Can he remove it with all this heavy equipment?
Can he remove the contamination?
Yeah, from the field.